Never stop, you know. So when you get behind the eight ball, you really don't have a good, good choice.
So I, my, my guess is, and I know this is a forty thousand dollar cost, but my guess is that there is enough sign, replacements and, and new installs to keep this person busy, uh, I would think. But I would like to better understand whether we really, what's the maintenance on this machine? I mean, what, what is the ongoing cost of these machines? Maintenance, do you know?
I don't.
Does anybody know?
I don't think that's significant. It's the labors.
Well, the labor, but you have to put it all into a formula to determine whether or not the seventy dollars actually was a better deal.
Right.
Because I'm not sure it's gonna be fifteen now. It could be thirty or thirty-five. At that point, I'm not sure I'm.
There's a guy that's making the sense either way, also the one that goes out and puts them up.
Our street crews who puts them up.
But we remember the street crew who is trained to operate this machine.
Right.
Okay. All right, there any other questions on this capital equipment? We'll, we'll probably end up coming back to this, maybe talk to Charlie. All right, let's go ahead.
All right, total equipment, two hundred fifty-eight thousand. Next are the side improvements. Oops. So the first item is a splash pad and pavilion at Goldust. So the last couple of years, we have allocated some SPOLOST money to do some serious renovations at Goldust. But now there seems more to focus plan. We had a hundred thousand dollars for a splash pad, but now we have a much better understanding of what that actually would entail. So what we're budgeting is six hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. That would be a splash pad and a pavilion restroom building. Neck, like between the new playground equipment and the splash pad, we'd have a pavilion and a restroom building. So six hundred eighty-five thousand, that is SPOLOST. And then we have Pine Mountain improvements, a hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. You know, y'all have seen some of Wesley's drawings and ideas on what he wants to do out there. So this is money to go towards that, and that is all Douglas County SPOLOST. So, so those top two items are SPOLOST. The next item is street improvements for a hundred seventy-five thousand. Since we're doing a big project right now on streets, we don't necessarily expect that we'll do another big street improvement next year. However, we have to apply for the L-MIG program every year, and so this will be the L-MIG portion that we're getting. So this is L-MIG money. So I wanna, I went ahead and go ahead and budgeted for that, a hundred seventy-five thousand. We also have some traffic calming money for fourteen thousand. We've been budgeting that for a couple of years.
Okay, what are we doing with the traffic calming? What's it going to, what are we doing? Humps, speed humps?
I haven't been using it.
Okay, cuz we've, for years now, we've talked about slowing it down on South Dogwood, and that, nothing's ever occurred other, other than they put that machine out there for eastbound traffic. It still didn't slow the traffic down.
That's probably a question for Bobby, though, because when that came up before, there were some indications that we weren't allowed to put a speed hump on the road because of the slope and the speeds.
So how do you control traffic? Out of control on a sloped road?
I'm sure as you approach those stop signs, maybe you could put those little brrr. I, you know, I don't know, but that's always been a, a speed issue there. Uh, let me ask you this on the traffic calming. So you're asking for fourteen thousand dollars in the budget, which I have no problem with, but what about the money that was left over last year? Because we budgeted it last year.
Yeah.
And we didn't spend a dime of it, right?
Right, it rolls forward.
So we're just gonna roll it over, but we're not gonna add it on top of this, right? Because if we are, I don't really see the need to do that.
Okay.
All right, so let's not do that. Uh, cuz what was it last year, seventy-five hundred? Eight thousand?
I think last year we did fourteen, and it was seven thousand the year before. So we've actually, I think we've accumulated a little pot of money for traffic calming.
All right, let's just roll over last year's budget since we didn't use it.
Okay.
Question on the, uh, street improvements. On the detail on page twenty-six, it's for the L-MIG portion. It includes streets and sidewalks. I mean, is that a, do we have a sidewalk plan? As you all know, I've been pushing for infill sidewalks in some of the neighborhoods in my ward, and I thought maybe we could use some SPOLOST money with that. Uh, I didn't know if that's included in this, or is this for something else?
It's really just, that's an old description that I copied down, so it's really just street improvements.
We've only used it for streets. But we could.
We had a sidewalk plan, did we complete that sidewalk plan?
That predates me. I think that was the former mayor, when he was, seemed like he.
I mean, we did part of it.
Sidewalk stuff that became famous.
Yeah, I believe that dates back to two thousand and fourteen, but I don't think we've done much sidewalks.
Not since I've been here.
Not lately, but we did do a bunch in one year.
Yeah, that, well, that's the one you're talking about. Uh, it got done down, uh, Dogwood and.
South Carroll.
Yeah, there was a good amount of sidewalks that got put in, maybe two hundred thousand dollars in sidewalks.
Well, we didn't complete the plan cuz we had a lot more sidewalks planned out.
I think we should probably be taking a look at that. There are a number of places where we should, uh, add sidewalks. Maybe y'all can pull that up. I've never seen that plan.
Okay.
Like, for example, for, for example, in Charleston Place in Augusta Woods, for example, I mean, you have side, you have a house with a sidewalk, and then two houses that don't have sidewalks, you just have an island of sidewalk. Uh, and particularly in Charleston Place, the sidewalk is very narrow, so I don't, I'm not exactly advocating that we tear it all out and upgrade it, but I would like to see some, to complete the connectivity. And, uh, you know, maybe we could pull that up. Carroll County SPOLOST, if we haven't already extinguished those funds.
Seems like we would've talked to the, the developer who's finishing that out for some of that. That's what we did in Waters Mist. We got D.R. Horton to fill in, uh, some of those sidewalks that were skipped like that.
South Woods, did we?
South Woods, I'm pretty sure we did the same thing. Here's the thing, those should be part of the development plan, obviously. Uh, and that should've happened way back when, but we run into this all the time now, and we're trying to. Now, going forward, you can't get this done. You can't get a subdivision without agreeing to put these sidewalks in.
Absolutely.
Uh, but I think Danny is probably talking more about closer in downtown areas that have been developed for fifty-plus years that really should have some sidewalks on it. Is that primarily what you're talking about?
And also, we went, we went further with it, too. We expanded it to a six-foot sidewalk to use as a golf cart path. So we could be golf cart friendly city.
Interesting, I'd like to see that plan. That's not what happened on South Carroll Road, or?
No, it didn't. Some, it is on Daniel, though.
Is it?
It's expanded to six foot on Daniel.
Okay, I don't know anything about it. Not a bad idea, though.
On the splash pad pavilion and restroom, does that require the relocation of the sewer line that, uh, Vicky was proposing to, to take sewer to the snack shack? Because it's on, and then route it back underneath the, the new parking lot area?
No, we, when we master plan Goldust, we picked this site to use the infrastructure that's out there. It's just the, the existing concession restrooms on the septic tank.
Yeah.
Do we have any renderings on this splash pad and pavilion? Okay, good. I'd like to be able to see that. I, it feels like I've seen them before, but this is the first time I've seen this price tag. Well, not today, but in this budget season.
No, it's, it's new, this is. When did we hire Bobby in Callister? Six weeks ago?
Yeah.
So I mean, we've been working on it last month.
Okay. All right, any other questions on these site improvements? One, one million, one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Let's move on to, uh, building improvements.
All right, this is a big one. Two slides worth. So the first one is something we've been talking about for years. This would be the HVAC system at the Goldust gym. The last estimate we got was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to do that. We're also proposing HVAC at Goldust, the admin side of the building, thirty thousand. And then HVAC at City Hall, thirty thousand. HVAC at customer service, which is ten thousand. Uh, distribution and collection, you know, the new site that they've been putting together at the old West Plant. So we had budgeted money this year for the, they, they have the trailer in place, and we budgeted money this year, I guess, for the storage building. But when it came time to put the storage building in place, there's grading work that needs to be done. Anyway, that's, that has become a serious undertaking. So that is for that. And also Nick sent me a quote, um, for HVAC, I guess, at that site as well. So two hundred fifteen thousand, we hope, will be enough to finish out that office and storage building for distribution and collection. And then the next item is.
Does that include that HVAC work?
Yes.
The two hundred fifteen, okay.
Yes. The next item is some work to be done at the old library. So it's, um, it's being leased out currently, but with COVID, they are not, not everybody is in there right now. Are you wanting to do this now or later? Well.
If the change over.
Okay, so when their lease is over, we have some things that we need to take care of. One of which is AC in that building, but also the plumbing, um, is problematic there. But it would require tearing out flooring in the building and then some concrete outside the building. So this thirty-two thousand dollars would cover that.
Well, so let's go back. Tom, does this need to be in the twenty, twenty-one budget? Because that lease will not end. They haven't even moved any dirt on their new building.
It, it's possible.
Okay.
I talked to one of the guys from Southeast this week, and they've downsized their plan from eighty thousand to sixty thousand square feet roughly. But they're doing the engineering, so.
Okay.
You know, they're, they're, like, a lot of what we're talking to now, guys are trying to finish engineering, and a couple of them may do like a late fall groundbreaking, but most of them are probably looking at late February, early March to actually start digging. This, because no, very few of these are gonna try to grade during the winter, so.
Okay.
Okay, the HVAC at City Hall, we don't have air conditioning in City Hall, or is this just replacing the equipment, or what?
We do, but it's, hasn't been working, hadn't been keeping up. Well, in our, in our finance committee meeting, wasn't it really warm in there?
You have more than three people together, and you heat up.
It's warm in there today. It's set on seventy-four, but it's seventy-seven degrees, and so I'm assuming the.
The equipment's not working well, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
It just runs.
And the way, just the way that it's set up doesn't work well for us. We'll, we'll have one side of the big room out front where you've got people that are hot, and they're turning the controls down on that side, and then I've got somebody on this side with a space heater running, all in the same room, which, you know, and then the unit freezes up and.
Okay.
It doesn't work well.
Equipment's worn out.
All right.
Okay, go ahead.
The last item there is Butterball's renovation. So at this point, cost estimate is a million dollars, so we have put that in there, coming out of the general fund.
So Tom, talk to us a little bit about what a million dollars gets us.
Yes, please.
So we did, um, we did a bid back when Chris was here, and I guess low bid was in the four hundreds, remember? And then it, we went back and forth about whether the bids were legit and all that stuff. But, so we have a pretty good idea of what that internal renovation would, would cost. And it looks to me like, in order to do the site and the exterior, plus you got the duplex, that you're, you're gonna spend a million dollars without even having to think about it. And that assumes that we can do a road diet on Montgomery and put parallel parking out there, coming down the hill from Chiefs. And even if we do that, we're gonna have fourteen parking spaces at the most. So what I envision would be a drive-through window on the west end of the building, an entrance only from Montgomery, an exit only, two places on seventy-eight. The one below, if you're familiar with the two buildings that sit beside the duplex, right, the auto repair place, and there was a, a title pond or something, and it's something else now, but there's a driveway there. So we would tie into that, you'd have a, a right and a left exit there. And then closer to the red light, you'd have a right only. If you went through the drive-through, you'll only be able to exit west on seventy-eight. And then we would take the, the whole site that's not the drive-through lane and make it more like a park. So sod it, have outdoor seating, put trees back in there, cuz we've taken down the trees that sat on the wall. You remember the wall that, that separated Butterball's from the duplex? That's where the, the drive lane would be. So we've taken those trees down, we've gotta put trees back in there, shade it, you know, give people a place to eat outside. And then we can put the visitor center on the east end, closest to the billboard, and then put some kind of food establishment that would use the drive-through on the west end.
What's, what's the drive-through?
Drive-through window. Whether we do a coffee shop, or, you know, a little bakery kind of place, or even something heavier. I just, it just, you don't have enough room to do a whole lot. I've talked to Jerry's about coming. Right, there in a little bit of space out there near the hospital, that, that sort of fits. You know, we'll see.
What will be done with the duplex?
Office.
How much would it cost to? I guess, have you run a cost comparison on just demoing the duplex?
We could demo it, make it in the parking space.
And versus renovation, and are you, is there a cost benefit in renovating it?
I don't know about a benefit, it would just be cheap space relative to building something new.
So of, of the million dollars, though, I mean, could we save any of that by just demoing the duplex? And then you have more than fourteen parking spaces out there?
Yeah, you're not gonna get a lot more, but you'd get several.
How much would the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, do we have a need for that office space? Turning the duplexes into office space?
Yeah, we always need space, but.
Well, but I think it's a valid question, because if we have a need for that space, as opposed to having to build it or relocate that, you know, those offices somewhere else, maybe we do keep them. But if we don't have a need, just, it would be better. Maybe we tear them down, put parking up there, and it changes the, the potential use of the.
The long term is for Avante to be vacated. So.
Right, but you don't have enough room with those duplexes to?
No, it would, that would only move Sharon and Janet and, and, uh, is it Shannon?
Shannon, yeah.
The new coordinator.
How many spaces you think we can get out of that in additional spaces?
Just four, right? In, in the duplex.
Wasn't the original plan to move Sharon and Janet, and our Shan- Shannon now, into the actual Butterball's location?
Just Sharon.
Make that the welcome center? Okay, just Sharon.
Yeah, just Sharon.
So the office space at the duplexes would, would not be office space that we would run out to like a third party, where the DDA could lease it out?
I think we would use it. But yeah, I mean, you remember the plan back in the day was, the DDA was gonna do the renovation, and then they were gonna generate, you know, revenue by leasing the building, and they're gonna pay us back, and.
Right, and then we do receive some income from the billboard on site, too, right?
Who gets that income?
I've only seen it a time or two, and it's like a thousand dollars a year.
Where does it go?
I put it against their line of credit. So, you know, originally, the city signed a four hundred fifty thousand dollar promissory note for Butterball's, for what he was saying that they would, um, pay back.
But they never signed it, and we never turned over the money. But are you saying DDA don't own the billboard, but they're getting the cash flow from it?
I wanna say we were, we have recorded it, but in, in the last couple of years, I'm only seeing one or two thousand.
Okay. I'm concerned that there's three office spaces that we could possibly benefit out of the duplexes, but you just made it clear that one of those spaces is Sharon's. She would actually be in the main structure. So the other two, so we're keeping two duplexes or a duplex for two offices?
Well, two, two that I need, just, just to move that front part of.
Because of the Avante.
Avante, but I mean, I've got all kind of people in Avante.
Yeah. Well, we're actually looking at moving Bobby over to Avante. I mean, so the, the plan for removing or relocating Avante is not for sure imminent. It could be years down the road, and we could be looking at a municipal complex by that time. I would like to see a plan that probably does away with those duplexes. They may be something that's more headache than they're worth. Uh, I hate that it's only four parking spaces, but maybe something else can be done over there.
I hate that Butterball's is gonna be a welcome center, you can't even park a bus there. So if a load of people come through, wanna go to through the welcome center, you got no place to put it.
Well, maybe the, maybe that's what the duplexes could be. It could just be a bus parking lot. I don't know if it's large enough, or what the ingress, egress would look like, but I just, I don't know. I just, I never really understood the, the duplexes being involved in that plan from the beginning, so.
I almost feel like they're more of a liability myself.
I think they're just trying to use them, cuz they were there.
Okay, so let's look at that as an option as well, if you don't mind. Let's move on to building improvements. Uh, page two.
Moving on. All right, we've had some trouble at the Main Street office in the Avante building with their sewer. And, um, we, we brought in several people to look at it, but Nick's actually budgeted five thousand to bring in an engineer to look at it, cuz they have not been able to fix it. That's in the operating side, but here we have, hopefully, what the repair would be, no more than this, twenty-five thousand to repair the sewer there. But that would require, you know, busting up concrete and all that and replacing it.
So that's the restrooms down in the actual Avante building?
The Main Street office.
Okay, does it have anything to do with the concession, the, the restrooms here at the amphitheater?
No.
Okay, so they're not impacted by that? All right, twenty-five thousand dollars on that.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, then the next five items are what we discussed with Charlie and Nick yesterday. These are the things that we've, some of the things we've recently added. I will point you to.
Yeah, the detail, what page is that on?
Okay, page, starts on page twenty-four. So we have seventy-six thousand dollars in improvements at Goldust. So that starts at, so I'm in the Parks and Rec section on the detail. The third item, just below the air conditioner at Goldust, which we've already talked about. So, and I've tried to label what building they're at. So that, the first five items there in that group, build pavilion for seniors on backside of Goldust, security fence around the maintenance building, renovate the basketball concession stand, renovate bathrooms, and replace flooring in the fitness room. Those five items make up this improvements at Goldust line item.
So the renovate bathrooms at Goldust, this is inside the main facility?
Yes.
Forty thousand dollars for that?
Yes.
Last time I was in there, it needed some cushions and some new knobs on the shower. I didn't see forty thousand dollars, so.
Yeah, I think, I don't know about the showers, but the bathrooms they're referring to. The next four items is Powell Park, and that's eighty thousand dollars. So what they're seeing needs to be done is the concession stand and restroom at Powell Park, replacing the lobby flooring, renovate the bathrooms there as well, and updating all lights to LED, which includes the floodlights. So that's eighty thousand. Then we have two hundred and twenty-five thousand at V-Plex. So build a pavilion next to the playground, install concrete pla- pads for the bleachers. And then I'm moving on to page twenty-five. Renovate the football scoreboard, new scoreboards for nine fields, is that baseball? Baseball. Three new interest awnings for the civic center. Renovate the bathrooms and the civic center at V-Plex as well. Update all lights to LED and install, well, two more items. Install fifteen-ton unit at the V-Plex. Sounds like we already have the unit, this would be the installation piece. And then lastly, upgrade the network at V-Plex. So, um, we just got this number yesterday, a hundred thousand dollars. So in order for us to be more visitor-friendly and to do, like, sports, um, needing a better.
New scoreboards.
Yes, so that they would have Wi-Fi capability or be able to use Wi-Fi. We just don't have a very strong network out there. Do we even have Wi-Fi right now?
There is Wi-Fi out there, but there is, um, almost zero cellphone and, and cell data service there.
It's part of the reasons we have such a security issue out there with the maintenance building, is the camera system without internet doesn't really do you a whole lot.
You have Wi-Fi out there, right?
Barely.
But it is.
Wi-Fi cameras work real well.
Yeah, it's just not enough bandwidth. So we're, we're gonna resolve that one way or the other in this improvement. And hopefully, we can do it for less than what Jim's thinking, but we won't know till we get into it.
All right, and then the last three items in that recreation section have to do with Fullerville. Build security fence around concession stand and restrooms, replace roof on concession stand and restrooms, and then add security gate at the footbread, footbridge at the lower parking section at Fullerville, for a total of thirty-four thousand at Fullerville. And then the last item on this slide is police department improvements for thirty-nine thousand. So the very next section on the detail on page twenty-five is the public safety section. So I'm gonna start about halfway down, awnings. So they need to replace the awnings at the police department. They need new vinyl panels and window trim on the courthouse side. They need some flooring replacement, this would be in the detective's office and some of the other offices for the command staff and the other administrative, uh, so like the offices sides of the police department. And then lastly, they wanna replace one generator and then rebuild another generator. So those items add up to thirty-nine thousand at the police department.
My question is, um, being on the CVB board, we have talked about, um, kind of recreation tourism in Villa Rica. And so, to the extent that some of these V-Plex improvements would, would be to promote recreation tourism, bring tournaments and stuff like that, and maybe this is a twenty-twenty-two thing, because we're not there yet, but could some of this stuff be paid for with the hotel motel tax, particularly the V-Plex improvements?
With product development, yeah.
Okay, is that something that, I know we haven't got to the hotel motel tax budgeting yet, but is that something that we could just kind of?
It's possible, but we're not, we're not there yet, like you said.
Okay. Well, just something, maybe we can keep a note for twenty-twenty-two to kind of start. If we're, if we're pushing recreation tourism in the city, then maybe we can start kind of gearing some of these rec improvements to the extent that they're used, being used to attract, you know, baseball tournaments, sports tournaments and so forth to the hotel, you know, with hotel motel. Just, just a thought.
Okay.
Good point. Okay, any other questions on, uh, page two, building improvements? All right, that's two million, seventy-one thousand, the total of, of two of those, uh, those two pages. We'll go ahead and move on to requested capital for water.
All right. First one on here is the North Avenue Waterline Extension Project. We've been talking about this for a while. That's two point five million. This would be a Jifa project. So next, we have meters, water meters of three hundred seventy-five thousand. So that is a combination of sources. We have some Douglas County SPOLOST money. I don't think we've been able to allocate any Carroll County SPOLOST money to that, cuz we have so much other stuff we need to spend that on. So what isn't coming out of Douglas County SPOLOST for those meters is coming out of water and sewer fund. Next, we have, with all the dams in the city, we do have some serious improvements that need to happen there. So Pete is suggesting that we bring in an engineer to design that improvement, that needs, improvements that need to happen at the dams. Then we have the Connors Road Booster Pump Station, needs a hundred thousand dollars of improvements there. And, um, in discussions yesterday, it came up that we need to replace three chemical tanks at the water plant for a cost of thirty-five thousand, and then they have one high-service pump drive that needs to be replaced for twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, so all of these requested capital funds are either coming out of Jifa, which is the vast majority of it.
Yes.
Some's coming out of Douglas County SPOLOST, and the remainder is water and sewer picking up its own cost.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, uh, on water capital improvements, the capital request?
Is Georgia safe dams involved with any of these dams you're talking about improving?
I'm not sure.
I could hear your Michael.
They inspect all of them.
Okay.
We've, we've got four.
Terrible to deal with. They're like dealing with Norfolk Southern.
We've got Paradise and Fashion and Cowan, which are the three impoundments that we pull water out of, and then Spring Lake we're responsible for. And then the one that we're not is Mirror Lake. That's the HOA's responsibility. And then there's also a private dam at West Lakes, which is Liberty Pool. Familiar with that? You know where Beaver's Transmission is?
Yes.
So if you're going down Liberty, Beaver's is on the left. Those neighborhoods, there's like multiple neighborhoods that, that corporately call themselves West Lake, and there's a, there's a lake and a dam that that HOA is responsible for.
Okay.
So that's the, that, what is that, five, six? Six that I think are, are on our radar. Either we're repairing them, or we know that the HOA is doing some repairs, one or the other.
All right, any other questions?
Okay, can we just get an update on the Jifa? Cuz when we were in Covington last week, I thought I heard in passing that we had some news on that, but I wasn't really clear what. Because when we were in Covington last week, I thought I heard in passing that we had some news on that, but I wasn't really clear what it was.
All right, so we, we're applying for a, a program that would give us an interest rate break on the Jifa loan. And we weren't, we didn't qualify, but we were given two homework assignments that would get us there, and so we're working on those. One of them is for Pete, and that's an educational component with our fats, oil, and grease program. And then the one that I'm working on with Chris is the septic tank component of our system. So, it looks like out of our, say, six thousand and something residential accounts that about sixteen hundred roughly, or seventeen hundred are on, are septic customers, or septic operators instead of sewer customers. And about half of them are in the city, and half of them are out of the city. So, almost all of the water customers that we service that are not in the city limits are on septic. And so, they want us to identify them and then tag how old the systems are. They want us to develop a plan for possibly adding them to our sewer system, because there's a life to all those systems. And, and sometimes you can't refresh the drainage field because of the soil not working right. So, we have that situation going on with one commercial user on Seventy-Eight, going toward Douglas Full, that's in an older building. Their septic field is failing. You know, they're trying to figure out how they can get on our system. So, that, that will become more of a thing over time, as, you know, as these systems get old. But those are the two things that we're, that we're, we've been tasked with that hopefully will get us over the hump, and that'll save us one percent on the Jifa loan. It will lower our rate by one percent, a literal percent, not a percent of the rate. But, you know, like, if it's one point nine, it'd be zero point nine.
In other words, it's huge. I mean, that's, that's the incentive for doing that.
Big money.
Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, the next section is capital for sewer.
Yes. All right, so the abbreviations here, WP is West Plant and NP is North Plant. So, the first one is a million dollars. This is another Jifa project, a West Plant Influent. Then we have less, West Plant Effluent Overflow Line for fifty thousand.
So, y'all know the difference between Influent and Effluent? Because I didn't.
In and out?
In and out, right. So, the first, that first project is the old wet well where, where most of the city sewer goes to before it goes in the plant is shot. And then the Effluent is where it comes out of the West Plant, and we discharge into the creek. And we need to put in an overflow line there.
All right. Next is West Plant Sand Filters. West Plant Constant Speed Pump, number four, for eighty-five thousand. So, the West Plant has four bays for pumps, right? And they have three currently, so this would be adding a fourth pump for eighty-five thousand. Then we have the North Plant Belt Press for three hundred and fifty thousand. Then we need a hundred and seventy-five thousand for lift station and manhole improvements. And then the I and I improvements, which is inflow and infiltration into our system, a hundred thousand dollars to kind of seal those areas up. And then SCADA upgrades of forty-five thousand dollars. So, total sewer is almost two million dollars. Um, we can take a break right now. We do have cookies, and I think she passed out all your drinks. But we have cookies over here if anybody needs a snack, or we can take a restroom break for a few minutes.
How in the world did you get through that that fast? All right, are we?
We're taking a break.
We off? Yep, we're going to take a break.
Alisa, did you kill it?
I very well might. How in the world did she get through that so fast?